Welcome, everyone, to the June 12th Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start this meeting, I would just like to announce that unfortunately Supervisor Ottinger and our township manager, Mr. Gatto, couldn't be here tonight. Before the start of this meeting, the Board of Supervisors held a workshop at 6:30. Also, unfortunately, I was running a few minutes late, and Mr. Castle was nice enough to handle the workshops. Mr. Castle, sir, if you could chime in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a moment before I begin the meeting, I just want to remind our audience and those of us in the room that we had a special day on June 6th. It was a day that many men and women sacrificed their life and a lifetime of torment so that we could be free, so that we could sit here tonight and speak our piece. And it was only six days ago, and I watched several of the news programs of these soldiers and sailors, and a lot of these people, at their age, would be willing to do it again. We have such a great country, and I did not want this to be gone without a comment about that. Okay, we had a workshop session at 6:30 tonight. We discussed 22 items, and I'm just going to briefly touch on the topics. We have a public meeting. It begins at 6:30, and anyone is welcome to come to that meeting. We talked about the Valley of Fear with a consideration for the parking for the fall of this year on township property. We discussed Action Karate, possibly putting on a program at the Play Wiki Farm. We talked about the Play Wiki Board having a summer arts program. We talked about the pickleball courts and the walking trail at the Dolphin Municipal Park. We talked about speed humps on several of our township roads. We talked about hydro seeding the Dolphin Park. We talked about a sign in front of the Dolphin Park. We talked about our need to replace an officer that was recently retired. We talked about a grant from Bucks County to assist our police department in some of their operations. We talked about a parking issue at the intersection of Mallard and Nancy, right up there at the Russell Elliott Memorial Park. We talked about a police grant for our computer systems and our police cars. We talked about a review of the camera system that our police department would use to assist in the apprehension of criminals. We talked about a parking ordinance on Central Avenue behind the McDonald's. We have township property back there that commercial vehicles are parking on there, and we're getting a lot of complaints with that. We talked about a road program, our paving program for 2024. We talked about our storm sewer project on Pike Road that's nearing completion. We talked about our steel road lateral repair, which is coming to an end. There was discussion about a zoning hearing board appeal, and our solicitor referred us to another law firm to represent our interests. We talked about litigation and action at Sunset Memorial Park. We talked about old Bustleton Pike and our road departments trying to improve the area with dead trees and overgrown trees, and they've also been picking up trash on that road as well. There was discussion about Philadelphia water bills. All of our sewer that goes through Lower Southampton and storm runoff ends up in Philadelphia, and we are subject to their rates. So that's something that's going to affect every homeowner and business owner. We spoke about our audits for our fire companies from 2019 to 2022, and we're proud to announce that our fire companies passed the audit. So we're pleased with that. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Castle. I appreciate that. At this time, I would like to open the floor to public comment. Mr. Chrysanthus?
Yeah, hi. First off, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Father's Day this Sunday. For those of you who have fathers, you should tell them you love them every day. Mine died 40-something years ago, so every Father's Day I miss them. Last time, I talked about three things. I only want to talk about two. Am I missing out on the website about putting the addresses of the banners? I looked. Actually, someone came up to me at Acme and says, "That's a great idea. I have a banner up. I don't know where exactly it is." So is that something we're going to do?
I do know that the Board thought that was a terrific idea. I'm not quite sure where we are with that. I can follow up, Mr. Gatto.
Okay. And also, when you're handed materials for projects in the area, I asked if it could be scanned and put online. So instead of when you guys talk to each other, we're sort of at a loss about what's being done in terms of cost. Obviously, anything proprietary, I understand that. Obviously, nothing but personnel. But things like with the Dolphin Swim Club, what's happening? Is that something that could be done? I mean, I brought it up last time, and there was sort of like hem and a haw on it. So that, yeah, I sit here, and like when you talk about, "Oh, it's on such and such Brownsville. We're going to be doing this, this, and this," and I go, "I have no idea where that is. I've lived here for 16 years. I still don't know where some of those places are and what you're doing and the costs." So we, as citizens, can understand exactly what costs, where our money's going, and I think it would be greatly appreciated by us tax-paying citizens.
So basically, I mean, obviously, you know, everything is open to public record regardless. So you just want to have it made a little easier for the taxpayers who, you know, may have interest in it.
Right.
I mean, I have no issue with that. I'm not quite sure exactly how we could do it, but we can talk about that.
Oh, you just have it online and just say, you know, like things. Also, concerning the water suit, is it just, that's obviously directly correlated to how much rain we had, correct?
It is. It is.
So if we have a dry summer, the bills are going to go down, right?
Yes, there's estimates on flows, and there's also exceedances. So like when it rains a lot, there's also...
It did rain a lot. I felt like I was Noah this year, this spring. Yeah. Yeah. That's it. Thank you. Everyone, have a great Father's Day.
Thank you, Mr. Chrysanthus. Anybody else tonight for public comment? Ladies first.
I think you'd get ahead of us.
If you can just state your name, your address.
My name's Catherine. Catherine Perrin. I'm at 1003 Ponderosa Road, Feasterville.
And also, too, Katie, we also have a three-minute time limit. We try to keep everybody on. Just to let you know.
Actually, I don't have that much.
Okay.
Should I sign in here first, or can I talk? Three minutes is part of this?
Either way.
Okay. One thing I wanted to ask is about, is there an ordinance about the signs that are on street road that stay there? I mean, how long can they be there? It looks, it looks, signs all the way up and down, not big...
As long as signs advertise, they are excessive.
Yeah, the sign for in front of, the signs in front of Chipotle now, it's been there forever, but they're leasing. It's kind of an eyesore for Feasterville, that's all. I have, you know...
Mr. Italia, sir, if you could jump in.
Real estate signs are allowed to be there. The leasing is, we don't regulate those. Advertising signs are considered temporary. They're allowed up there for 30 days.
Okay.
If we send them a notice, they go away. It resets the clock, and then they come back.
Come back again.
It's a kind of, it's a cat and mouse game with them.
It just doesn't look good for Feasterville. Anyway, I'm here to support Walt. I'm from the USTA. I worked for them for 22 years. I am now a volunteer with the USTA. That's the United States Tennis Association, if you don't know what it means. I am here to support getting funding, which I hear has maybe been approved. All I've heard about was the trails and pickleball, and I'm looking that the tennis courts get done. I would have had more people here had I known it was going to be discussed tonight. Has it been approved for the tennis courts?
We're going out, we told them to go out to bid.
Okay.
No, you're going to make the specs first so we can go out to bid.
Okay.
That's what we're discussing.
What are specs?
Mr. Everett, you want to explain, please?
So to make sure that everybody is bidding on the same project, we put together contract documents to spouse out all the improvements that are required. So any public improvement project has contract drawings and contract specifications, so that makes sure that certain rules are followed, and then it goes out to bid for public solicitation. There is rules that are required, federal rules with regard to bidding. So those specs include all those rules, so every, all the contractors...
No.
No, yeah.
How long does that take?
Probably within...
It's been four years?
Yeah, so within the next month, the specs will be done, and then it's another month to go out to bid, to receive bids.
Okay, so fall, possibly.
I would hope to be...
I just need to know for programming and tournaments, I mean, the tennis courts will bring in money to the township with tournaments and leagues that people are playing, but...
It might not be able to start leagues until the spring.
Okay. Next year.
Yeah, just, you know, there's fencing associated with it. There's, you know, new equipment, so depending on if there is a lead time, you know, some of the materials aren't available that take a little longer, and others. So, you know, there might be recreational, you know, people playing on it in the fall, but I don't think leagues would start till spring.
They'll be done. Okay, should I sign in here? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Should I sign in here?
That's fine. We all know who you are. Thank you.
You know where I live.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Ms. Roscoe, I promise we will get to everybody. Hello, Ms. Roscoe.
Thank you very much for talking and bringing up the Sunset Memorial Park issue. The cemetery has not been good neighbor, but maybe now they will be if we put a little bit of fire underneath them. Does that sound like a good idea, guys?
We did put the fire, and that's, we hope to have agreements in the next two weeks.
Yeah, well, if you could have gotten some money from them, too, that would have been more of a fire, a bonfire, you know? Anyway, I spoke to Christine Lynn a while ago about banners for the holiday. Doesn't have to be anything totally religious if that offends people. After all, Holy Redeemer is not holy anymore because the holy offended people. Go figure. Anyway, yeah, it's not Holy Redeemer anymore, it's just Redeemer. But, so that's some news for people that don't know that. I'd like banners to go up, like Thanksgiving time, through the holiday season, because all the other townships do it, but we don't. And it shouldn't be as much as it was to put up the wonderful banners that are now up Bustleton and Street Road for our service people, because the posts are already there, so we just really have to order the flags. So I would like to put in everybody's mind, let's get something and celebrate the season, you know, where we live. Other townships around here do it.
Terrific idea. I have it in my notes. Thank you. Absolutely.
Okay, well, I just wanted to voice my opinion.
I appreciate it.
The more people that agree...
I will never disagree with you with anything.
I know. I'm twice happily married. I want to go off the three-minute thing, and thank you very much, Stephen, for mentioning D-Day. Both of my parents were there. My mother was a nurse. She was one of 13 nurses that were, the men on the, not Omaha Beach, I can't remember which beach it was, they made a tunnel of their bodies to protect the women who were nurses that were coming over to serve, to help put these guys back together that were blown apart or still living. And my mother was one of those 13 nurses, and my father was a doctor, and that's where they met.
Wow.
All those years ago, so...
Yeah, thank you for the beautiful story.
It was a great day for them.
Thank you. Anybody else tonight for public comment? Mr. Kate, sir? Always good to see you, Mr. Kates.
Well, thank you. Have you seriously considering doing something about the sewage issues and the overcharges with the Philadelphia Water Department? I'm glad to see that the township finally adopted that lateral ordinance, but when I first moved here about 23 years ago, the township was enforcing the laws to prevent the oversupply, the putting groundwater and stormwater into the sewer system. There was an inspection program that they did. There's, I can get you the minutes if you want to see them. There's minutes that show what happened when they did that survey. Ninety-five percent of the people collected the problem. If you have a sump pump in your basement and you're putting it in the sewer, it's costing every one of our people to pay for the sewer to do that. I am really proud of the township, what they've done with the infiltration in the inlets. I mean, the, what do you call them there?
Regrouding the other...
Yeah, regrouding, and you need to keep continuing to do that. But I really think, before you get to the point where you're considering setting up your own sewage plant, you think real hard, where are you going to put it in this township? I don't think anybody's going to want it in their backyard. So I think we need to do everything possible to keep the infiltration, and that means taking the irresponsible people who take, and there are a lot of them in the township. When they did the first survey, there was a whole lot of sump pumps that were put into that sewer system. There's also people, and your people can, your Public Works people can tell you, they have cameras that go through there, they can tell you when somebody's putting their sump pump or groundwater or their downspouts into the sewer system. You need to enforce the law so the rest of us don't have to pay the extra cost. That's just my thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kates. We appreciate that. Anybody else tonight for public comment? Ms. Samuel, if you wouldn't mind, there's a gentleman raising his hand in back for quite some time.
Good evening. Boris Carroll, and I'm the owner of Altitude Trampoline Park, 1045 Bustleton Pike. I've been following the minutes and since the last time we were here to see if this item of amusement tax would appear. And finally, I see that last meeting, it has appeared in terms of some commentary that you discussed in your workshop, and today, I think Mr. Ryan mentioned he was going to talk about it, and, you know, it hasn't been talked about. So my concern is obviously where we stand with that. And since that last meeting, my understanding was that it was tabled, pending, also if it was ever brought up, there would be a lot of input from business owners, notification to business. I haven't heard anything. So I'm concerned. You know, I have a lease that I think expires in about two years. That would make a huge impact on the decision that I make for my business, the future of whether I want to keep my business here in this township in terms of how it's, whether it's tabled, whether it's, you know, implemented, what, just all, I'm not going to get on the soapbox today, but I will just say, just in general, the way it is currently on the books, completely, in my personal opinion, unfair, very high, and just a lot of broad definitions that are not easily defined as to what it actually is. Entertainment facilities, amusement tax, not very clearly defined. So going forward, if, in fact, these are things that are going to be discussed, Mr. Ryan, I would love to see it on the agenda, and we could have a more productive conversation about what's going on. Obviously, if you tell me today, "We're never going to talk about it again," great. But if, in fact, it is going to be brought up, and maybe I'm just one of the business owners that hasn't been told about it, and others have been involved, would love to know that as well, to see what their input is, because I have many, many thoughts on that topic, so.
We appreciate you coming back up, absolutely. We absolutely plan to have the businesses come and speak. I do, I don't want to quote Mr. Gatto word for word. The last time we spoke about it as a board was, you know, quite some time ago. I remember you coming. I do remember Mr. Gatto saying at that time that there was an invitation sent to businesses such as yours, and, and I don't want to quote Mr. Gatto once again, word for word, but I think he had said, I don't think he said anybody showed up. So with that said, the Board has made their decisions. If we should go forward with this, I am sure the Board does not want to, you know, make things harder on the businesses than necessary if we should go forward with it. But we would, you know, have conversation. We would let you guys know. We wouldn't pass anything and then try to implement it a month later. That is just absolutely not okay. We get your concerns, and as we move forward with this, you know, at the next meeting, Mr. Holland, or Mr. Ryan, we'll bring it up again, and hopefully we get to see you back here again, and we can, you know...
Like I said, I follow you on the streams and check for the minutes, and have not seen that until last.
We recently just started talking about it, maybe...
But in terms of the invitation, you can see that I'm very concerned. It wouldn't be, if I got the invitation, rest assured.
Okay.
Yeah, so a lot of these things are discussed in a work session.
Sure.
We don't have a lot of time to go through things, but we usually have an hour prior to a meeting, and we had 22 items, you know, that we discussed. We would have probably talked about it, the status of where we are with this, but...
But I presume that prior to those work, you know, work sessions, that gets discussed offline, and that's where you would probably have most valuable input from people like myself and others to have it in a, whether it's a formal or informal setting, somewhere, you know, where ideas are already vetted and conclusions already reached.
Right.
So that's why.
It's discussed during the work session. So before I was on the Board, when I worked for the Firehouse, if we had an idea that we wanted to bring to the Board, we wouldn't attend the work session. So I would encourage you to attend the work session. We would have had a conversation about it. Mr. Ryan did have some information, so I wouldn't be surprised if that's something that gets brought up in the next work session. So come to the work session.
Yeah, next meeting, we will give time to speak about this matter, so feel free to show up.
Okay, the 26th.
That will be the 26th, correct.
Six thirty.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And is it possible to speak to you prior to that work session about what's going on as well? Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else tonight for public comment? Ms. Samuel?
I'm here to discuss the road bumps on our street. I'm on 1029 Hoover Avenue. I'm on the corner of Hoover and Ruth, and it's my family home. They've been here since the 40s. And when my family moved in, our kids were young, and the traffic was still high. You know, every day I go out without a fail, somebody just glides right on through the stop sign. Every day, all day, you know? And now there's a new generation in my area, very small children, out riding their bikes, stuff like that. And I, I just think this is a long time coming for these bumps. You know what I mean? It really needs, it really needs to be on Hoover, and even on Ruth. I mean, we get constant, especially in the morning when people are coming home. It's just ridiculous. You can't even get out of your driveway. You know what I mean? But it's just, no regard to stop signs, nothing, and there's plenty of times people are doing way over the speed limit. And when I got that letter, I thought it was a gutsend. You know, so I'm here to say that, you know, I really hope you go ahead with this, because this is something that really needs to be done on that street.
Well, thank you very much. And just to clarify, for anybody viewing at home, there are actually speed humps, not speed bumps.
Yes.
I know some people may not know the difference, but it's a hump, not a bump.
They're the bigger ones, they're not the little ones.
Correct. And we appreciate you coming. I mean, that's actually terrific, because we want to do right by our residents, you know? We can't always make everybody happy, but we have had a few other residents come to support this, and I know Mr. Mulholland has sent letters out to everybody, and he's gotten a lot of positives, so hopefully in the near future, we have some sort of direction.
It's an exciting day. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Samuel. We appreciate it. Anybody else for public comment? Hello, Mr. Stevens, how are you, sir?
I'm doing well. My name's Clint Stevens. I reside at 345 East Myrtle Avenue in Feasterville. I have this whole statement I was going to read, but Mike Italia is answering questions today. He just answered this nice lady's question, and I've got three minutes of questions to ask Mike, so I'm going to proceed. Mike, after you told my neighbor he could steal my property...
Mr. Stevens, please address the Board. Proper protocol is addressing the Board.
I address the Board.
The Board doesn't know the answer. Only Michael knows the answer.
Well, it doesn't mean Mike will even respond back to you, sir.
So he'll plead the Fifth again?
We're not in court. Nobody's pleading the Fifth.
Oh, and he will say, "No comment," which is basically pleading Fifth. And by you not allowing me to address him, that allows him to not even have to say, embarrass himself by saying, "No comment." I'll just read my statement, since apparently the rules are only against me. I will begin, again, by stating for the record that the zoning officer, Mike Italia, is corrupt. That's the man next to the chief, right there.
Sir, you do not make slanderous remarks.
That is not slander, it's truth. The truth is never slander, sir.
You're accusing someone of a crime, sir.
He did commit a crime.
Keep going, keep going. You're digging your own hole.
I'm not just getting started. You sue me for slander. I won't even hire a lawyer. I'll represent myself. First thing I'll do is I'll put Mike Italia on the stand, and he will either plead the Fifth or he will be fired. Then we'll all sit down, and we'll watch the cop cam video that you refused to watch. And he might just go to jail for it. So go ahead and sue me for slander. No comment? And I'm just going to continue with what I was saying, okay?
You're not sl, you're not accusing, you're here to address the Board.
That man is corrupt.
Keep going, go dig the hole.
Mr. Gillen, Mike Italia is corrupt.
Keep going with your comments.
Like I said, I represent myself. I don't need to hire a lawyer. I would love to get him on a bench. I would love to. A three-year-old could make him look like a fool on the bench, because that's why he's saying, "No comment," right?
But he has an opinion of who looks like a fool.
That's why you were stopping me from asking him questions.
He doesn't have to answer the questions at this meeting. The accusations you make don't warrant answers. Finish your comments.
You just sucked up most of my three minutes, sir. He conspired with my neighbor to steal my property and possessions. I believe that he proudly received bribes for his part in the theft. He abused his power, he used the power of his position to ignore codes of this township...
Mr. Stevens, guess what time it is?
...and get the outcome that he desired.
Mr. Stevens, your time is up, sir. Thank you.
I would rather be watching Phil's game than doing this. My father, who died 15 years ago, I'm sure would be proud of me for coming here and speaking for the people, who that man is...
Anybody else up here for public comment tonight?
Even if you had this on Sundays...
Anybody else?
...during Eagles game, I would still come here, because this is bad news.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. Line item one, A, approval of minutes, May 22nd, 2024. B, approval of accounts payable, June 12th, 2024. And C, approval of certain recurring monthly bills, June 12th, 2024. Do we have a motion for line item one?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept the consent agenda for June 12th, 2024.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second from the Board?
Second.
Thank you very much for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Line item two, consider adoption of ordinance 612, amending the parking ordinance. This is something that I can talk on. We've had discussion about this before in the past, where the township owns some property behind the alleyway off of Central Avenue, behind the Sunoco. We've had complaints from some of the residents about tractor-trailer parking there for extended periods of time. The Board wanted to look into it. We had Mr. Italia and Chief Krimmel look into it. Mr. Italia, Chief Krimmel, I believe you guys are still on board with this? Okay, very good then. So at that time, I would like to have a motion for line item two.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a first, we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion from the Board? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for all. All right. Line item number three has been tabled for this evening, so we will move on to line item four. Consider authorizing the advertisement of the 2024 road paving program. Mr. Everett, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. We're looking for authorization to go out to bid for the 2024 road program, which consists of 12 township roads with three add alternates. We'd go out to bid tomorrow with the opening on July 10th, for recommendation on the July 17th Board Supervisors Meeting.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Everett, so the motion would read, to advertise the advertisement for the 2024 road paving program. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Parrotano. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for all. Line item number five, consider authorizing the third and final payment for the Pike Road storm sewer replacement project. Mr. Everett, sir, back at you.
Thank you again. Looking for authorization for the third and final payment to LP Construction Enterprises. This is for work that was done on Pike Road for storm sewer replacement that was collapsing. The work was complete, and we're recommending final payment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Everett. So the motion would read, authorize the third and final payment in the amount of $39,532 to LP Construction Enterprises, Inc., for the Pike Road storm sewer replacement project, and authorize the township manager to sign documents. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parrotano. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for all.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, that project's been going on for a couple of years now, and Mr. Everett, our township engineer, has done a great job. It's been a lengthy process, and I think we're all going to be pleased with the end result of that job.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Castle, for that. All right, line item six has also been tabled for this evening, so we will move on to line item seven. Consider approval of the NIBRS compliance grant application for the police department. Chief Krimmel, sir.
Real quick, NIBRS is the National Incident Based Reporting System. We're being forced by the federal government into the reporting system. Most of the country's not on it yet, we're trying to get on it so we can get moving. This grant would go towards financing a lot of the costs that we'll have to bear to get it going.
Terrific. Very good then. So the motion would read, to approve the NIBRS compliance grant application for the police department. Do we have a motion, please? I'll make that motion. Thank you, Mr. Castle. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for all. Line item number eight, consider authorizing the change order payment for Steel Road lateral repair. Mr. Everett, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. This is for repair to a lateral that was in the vicinity of the Steel Road pipe replacement. We called out, the contractor was called out for emergency repair due to a resident complaint. We are recommending a payment to the, to Kehoe, which is KG Construction, for the amount of $1,396.88.
All right, thank you, Mr. Everett. So the motion would read, to authorize the change order payment for Steel Road lateral repair to KBC Construction in the amount of $1,396.88. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Parrotano. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs., I almost said Mrs. Cummings, oh my lord, Mrs. Bowman. Any other discussion from the board? Seeing none. I do have one question for Mr. Dillon. Mr. Dillon, sir, I live on Steel Road, should I recuse myself for any reason?
No.
All right, thank you very much. Once again, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for all. Thank you. Line item number nine, consider authorizing the conflict solicitor to represent the township in the JMAC Investments zoning hearing board appeal. Mr. Dillon, sir.
Yes, the zoning hearing board turned down the application of JMAC Investments. I was going under my appearance just to monitor what was going on with the appeal. Turns out, JMAC, the owner of JMAC is one of our, the firm's clients, so I suggested to the manager that this should refer, be referred to the conflict solicitor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dillon. So the motion would read, to authorize the conflict solicitor, Patrick Armstrong of Brimbleman Thatcher, to represent the township in the JMAC Investments zoning hearing board appeal. Do we have a motion?
Stop moved.
Thank you very much, Mr. Castle. Do we have a second?
Second.
Very good, Mr. Parrotano. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for all. Line item number 10, consider authorizing the township manager to sign the Sunset Memorial Park development financial security and storm water agreements. Mr. Dillon, sir.
Yes, this has been prepared for a while. The, the, the owner of the property has submitted information to be reviewed about the amount of financial security to be required that needs to be moved, reviewed and approved by Mr. Everett. Once he does that, I'm going to amend, change the agreement, and we'd like to get this project started as soon as possible, hopefully before the next meeting. So assuming we get the information, we would like to have the authority for the manager to sign the agreement, so we can proceed as quickly as possible.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dillon. So the motion would read, to authorize Joseph Gallo, township manager, to sign development, financial security and storm water agreements for Sunset Memorial Park. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bowman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for all. All right, now we are on the manager's report, and Mr. Mulholland is nice enough tonight to handle Mr. Gallo's duties.
Sure, thank you, Board Chair. So manager's report, sanitation rebate runs February 8th through May 31st. 1,239 rebates were issued in the amount of $61,950 back to the residents. And this Friday, the flag retirement ceremony from the VAC is hosting at Play Wiki Farm. 10 o'clock Friday morning, retiring flags that have flown their last in honor, all are invited. That's it.
All right, very good. Moving on to supervisors' comments, ladies first, Mrs. Bowman.
I just want to piggyback off of what Walt said. There is a flag retirement ceremony, so if you do have a flag that is tattered or has fallen on the ground, there is a box in the front of the foyer area of the township building. Bring your retired flag, your tattered flag. If you need a new flag, you can reach out, and we'll try and get you a new one. Also, there is a Play Wiki Farm food truck rally to be held this Friday night, June 14th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. There's all different kinds of food. Kids can play on the playground, it's a really nice, the weather is supposed to be beautiful, it's a really nice night out with the kids, come hungry. And don't forget, school is ending soon, kids are going to be out on their bikes, so please drive safely.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bowman. Mr. Parrotano, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to make sure I remember all the dads out there, Father's Day, and, and just be grateful if you still have them, and those looking to be fathers, be responsible. But we also have life so simple, right? You know, government is a messy business sometimes, and, you know, good or bad, everybody has a right to come to this meeting and speak their mind. Some participation is productive, some participation could be not productive.
You don't have a right to be rude, though.
This is board time, okay. I understand your sentiments, but I'll get through it. Everybody has an opinion. Some people can't, or won't accept other opinions, and that's fine. I can state, prior to me being elected to this board, that I have dealt with many people from the township, and over 26 years, I think now, I've lived here, and I've always found township personnel to be upfront and helpful, and perform their duties. And when I've had a complaint, it's been addressed. Many of the board members here, I know have tried to address the interests of the party that was here tonight. I've exchanged multiple emails with them, offered help in resolving his issue. That has been rebuffed, because when you have a landline dispute, the only way to solve a landline dispute is to have a lane survey done by a certified engineer. I offered up to assist them, go through that process, they feel that that shouldn't be the answer, that that shouldn't be his responsibility, many other things, and that's fine, that's his opinion. But I just want the public to understand, as a body of government, we do try and remedy situations. I don't think it's right to come up here and accuse people of things just solely based upon your own opinion, but government is messy, and we have to accept everybody's right to free speech, and that's what it's all about. I would like to, you know, apologize to our staff for having to endure that. You aren't elected officials, you are hired by the, by this board to perform a job duty. It's okay, if they attack us, you know, we're elected, it's not right when they attack you. Whether it's right or wrong, there's a merciful way to conduct those grievances, and I wish we could reach that, but I just don't think it's going to happen. Otherwise, Neshamani High School seniors have graduated today, graduation still then. Last night, my wife and I were able to participate in the LSAA Scholarship Awards, in which we awarded the one that our family sponsors, Stevie's Fund, to Ryan Mayan, a graduate in Neshamani, attending Penn State. I want to thank Walt and his committee and the LSAA for, you know, continuing not only to do ours, but they do four altogether, which they do. And it was just nice to, to attend that event and see these young people that are going out in the world, and hopefully going to be taking care of us someday. So, otherwise, everybody have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parrotano. And with the hand to our vice chair, Mr. Castle, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for showing up tonight. I thought I'd have to run the meeting myself. I was up all day practicing. I want to thank everyone who was here tonight, and those who are watching from home. You hold our feet to the fire, and we appreciate everyone being here and everyone giving us feedback, so whether we agree with you or not, that's not the point. You have a right to come here, and we're anxious to hear it. And sometimes we get heartburn, and other times, we laugh and cry with you. So, thank you. My father watches on YouTube from Florida, and my mother and father just celebrated their 69th wedding anniversary. So, when they watch this, Mom and Dad, congratulations. My father and my mother are Neshamani graduates, they have outlived most of their classmates, sadly. Dad is a veteran also, he served in the Mediterranean, post-Korea, and we're still at war with North Korea, and he'd be willing to go in a heartbeat, you know? He doesn't, doesn't like what he sees going on. Play Wiki Farm, we have many events going on, including a fresh produce, which is on Sunday mornings, so please, the farm's a beautiful place, there's an event probably going on every week, whether it's our Parks and Rec program that is going on. If you want more information on our Parks and Rec program, or the Play Wiki Farm, lowersouthamptontownship.org. Please sign up for emails, they come once or twice a week. This is where some information gets disseminated publicly. We also just had a newsletter that was mailed out to most homeowners or residents, there's important information in there, and there's several pages of our summer program. If you want to find a place for your kid to have some fun this summer, reach out to that program, there's probably 20 different programs, so that's wonderful. Our next meeting is June 26th, I hope everyone will be there. We discuss a lot of information at the workshop. We do allow people to make comments. We don't render decisions, we don't take votes during that time, but we always want to hear what our public has to say. And Mr. Kuzaratus, I want to wish you a happy Father's Day, and all the other fathers that are present or listening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Castle. As, as was stated earlier, just when I can graduate, all the graduating classes of 2024, as Mrs. Bowman had mentioned too, please keep an eye on the kids as you travel through the neighborhoods, you know, kids don't always pay attention. We've had, we've had one young boy, very nice young boy, who's actually crashed into my son's truck twice in the past month and a half. I don't know how these things happen, but kids don't always pay attention. So if the drivers out there could please pay attention, we'd appreciate it. I want to apologize to Mr. Italia, because as most of us have seen tonight and have heard, that was horrible, once again, what you've gone through, Mr. Italia, and I personally want to apologize to you for having to be on the hot seat for no reason. Thank you for, for being true to Lower Southampton, we appreciate that. Lastly, Happy Father's Day to everybody, all my colleagues here, Happy Father's Day, and everybody at home. Thank you very much, and at this time, can we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for all. Thank you very much, everyone.